I'd like to open the February 27th meeting of the, I'm sorry, March, March 21st. Okay. Thank you. Signify, help out, of the Crime Free Housing Task Force. And the first thing on our agenda is roll call, and rather than call the role, I'd just like to introduce the members of the task force to you. On your far left is Dean Hart, he's an alderman here in Belleville. Kevin Bouse, who is a landlord here in Belleville. Linda Havlin was unable to make it this evening, she had a conflict. John Maser, who's also a landlord. I'm Ken Kinsella, I'm an alderman. Dan Nolan is representing the homeowners, he's also chair of the zoning committee. And Tricia Tyaldo is a Realtor in the area. We'd like to welcome all of you, and the next thing that we'd ask is that you'd stand with the pleasure of leading.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the March 14th meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Mr. Maser and seconded by Mr. Hart. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If it passes, thank you. At this time, we'd like to have the presentation of the Crime Free Housing Act and draft to the city council and public. We will be having a public hearing here, and since we don't have a whole lot of people, we'll be holding this as a kind of conversation as you go through. I would like to ask if everybody has had a chance to grab one of these off the back table. If you have not, please feel free to grab one. And I have a little overview that I intend to go through before we actually start discussing the individual pieces. Now, I don't intend to read this stuff to you line by line, however, when it comes to the purpose, which is on the front page, thirty-three, three dash one, I would like to read that. "The goal of the City of Belleville Crime Free Housing Program is to increase the quality of life of residents by partnering with the city, by partnering with the city with owners, landlords, and managing agents to decrease the incidence of public safety violations and criminal activity in rental properties." I do not expect this to be an easy thing to grasp right away. Our committee has had hours of discussion. As a matter of fact, I think we probably had five or six hours before we put something down on paper, if I remember correctly. So we want to go through this slowly with you, so everybody can follow along. I would like an overview of this at this time, and that is, I'd like you to look at page two. And on page two, section thirty-three, three dash two, it basically requires a committee to review the program at least every six months. It was the concept of this committee that this crime-free housing program needs to be monitored on a regular basis, and will probably need adjustment as we go along. So one of the recommendations is that we have a committee that means regularly to go over it. On thirty-three, three dash three, it covers all the rental properties except those listed under A, B, C, and D. If you go on to page three, please. Thirty-three, three dash seven, it is, requires the registration of all rental units, new registration when there's a new owner. The fee is twenty-five dollars per year, per unit. And that's probably the big thing you want to catch in there, is that there is a fee. On page four, thirty-three, three dash eight establishes an appeals process if the registration is denied. Somebody seeks registration and we deny it, there is an appeals process. It also calls for a licensed attorney to be appointed as a hearing officer. Thirty-three, three dash nine, it lists the information needed on rental property registration Thirty-three, three dash ten, it requires a local agent within a fifty-mile radius to represent the owner if there's an emergency. And by the way, if I'm not saying this right, you guys jump in. You know you will. On page five, thirty-three, three dash eleven, owners, landlords, or managing agents must take a class. There is reciprocity with other municipalities, meaning that if you've already taken a similar kind of class in Fairview, it comes. And then it has a list of concepts to be covered in the class. It's not a complete curriculum, but it covers some of the things that the committee thought were important to be had, to be dealt with in that class. Thirty-three, three dash twelve calls for requirements to be added to the lease. It's also found on page six in thirty-three, three dash fifteen. The lease addendum is found on page fifteen in Fairview. As a matter of fact, I think I suggest that after thirty-three, three dash twelve, you write page fifteen in the column because that actually shows you what one looks like. On page five still, thirty-three, three dash thirteen requires a criminal background check on all new occupants over eighteen years of age.
And they have a choice between eighteen and older.
Yes. Oh, excuse me, eighteen or older, thank you.
Right, and you can rent to whoever you want. We are asking that a background check is done, so you're aware of who you're renting to. So that's, we're not telling you, you have to deny anyone, we're just saying, please, please do it.
Page six, thirteen, three dash fourteen, the owner, landlord, or managing agent signs this form saying a background check has been done. We do not get the background checks. The landlord, or the owner, or the managing agent, whoever it is, signs an affidavit saying I ran one. Thirty-three, three dash fifteen states what should be included in the crime-free rental agreement. And again, that refers to page fifteen. It pretty well spells out what's on the sample form on page fifteen. On page seven, thirty-three, three dash sixteen, calls for a rental incident form, called RIF, that we completed after each police call to a rental unit. And that RIF happens to be unnumbered, it's at the back of your packet, I believe. It's a, I don't have one in mind, because I, yeah, okay. That should be the last thing in your packet.
Sure. A rental incident form, which we call a RIF, is what the officer must fill out when they respond to your unit in the middle of the night, when you're asleep. And it can be emailed to you the next morning, or however you choose. So I can wake up and have this in front of me and see, looks like there was a party and illegal activity happened at one of my units. It will say, who's involved? The officer that responded. We're going to approve the RIF form. It will say, action taken, so we know the plans of the police department. And we'll say citations issued. And then we're also going to put a section that will say recommended, or recommendations. It could be that, to monitor the tenant, or it could be to call Crime Free to discuss the matter. And then this will help paint that picture of what's going on in our units when we're not around, because none of us, very few of us live right next to our apartment building, or duplex that we may rent. So that's something that's worked very well in the voluntary program here in Belleville.
Thank you. Thirty-three, three dash seventeen, owners, landlords, or managing agents need a crime-free housing certificate. And that spells out how it should be acquired. Page eight, thirty-three, three dash eighteen establishes conditions in which crime-free housing certificate can be revoked. It could happen, we hope it never does, but that's, that's in here in case it's needed. And on page nine, this establishes fines, not again, thirty-three, three dash nineteen establishes fines for violations of this ordinance. And thirty-three, three twenty has a rather unusual item in it, in that it has an expiration date. It's the feeling of this committee that this should be looked at on a regular basis, and that unless the city council takes other measures, it will automatically cease, and to have a date to be named in 2017. The idea here is that some people fear that because there's a fee involved, it might just become a fee-raising thing. And we wouldn't follow through with all the promises that we are making here of support from the police department in housing. And rather than have it be a revenue-generating thing, it has a sunset date on it, so that it will be looked at very strongly at the time. And of course, it can be renewed, that's not a problem, but it just, it's a, it's a way of assuring that it will be looked at very strongly by the city council before it expires. Yes, Your Honor?
Chairman, I think Mr. Maser had the last committee meeting. Was your intent three years?
Mr. Mayor, my intent was that it would expire at the end of 2017, although I will make comment that the draft that you are looking at right now reflects that that piece was deleted and not put back in.
President, Mr. President. I didn't.
Okay, it's added back in, section three, mine print is a little extended.
Unless, unless otherwise extended by the council, it shall expire on, and it'll be
whatever date that the council sets in 2017.
Well, I would suggest to ask the committee to decide tonight, hypothetically, if it's implemented soon, our fiscal year starts May 1st. So your choice would be have a sunset, so it can be reviewed and decided if it goes forward or not, either April 30th of 16 or 17. Decide what year. Pick a time, pick at the end of the fiscal year, so that it'll have to be renewed ahead of time, so it'll continue in effect, May 1st that next year. So whatever you all decide, I would suggest April 30th being the sunset date.
I would, I would agree, makes sense, Mr. Mayor, and April 30th of 2017 sounds good to me. Because 2017 was the year we were.
Yeah, it's going to take better part of this first year to really go inside.
Absolutely.
Several months of this.
And we'd hope that this would be looked at well before that date, given, it is a progress, it's a work in progress. Now, I just gave you a very small overview of what's, this, how this is laid out, and it's not meant to be specific as such. Is there anything in particular that members would like to explain more, only before we ask the questions? What?
One thing I want to mention is, I got to spend time with Grand City and their Crime Free Housing and Campbell Gage. We also, I've had meetings with Fairview Heights Crime Free Officer up there, and I tell you what, they all have said, you can be able to tell with the statistics what is working. You're going to be able to run records and see calls go down. Collinsville has had almost a third less after three years of having it in their crime among their rental units. The other thing we have to do, like we said, is every six months, this committee, it's composed of a variety of different people, needs to look at it. And in Grand City, they've on their third revision, and they're seven years already. So we, we know this has to adapt and can be better, so that's something we want to be open to, while we do this.
When we, as a committee, put this thing together, we've got a great team here of homeowners, and real estate agents, and aldermen, and landlords, Kevin and I being the landlords. There is no way that this is not going to impact us. It's going to cost us, as landlords, twenty-five dollars per unit per year, that's a lot of money. But our intent is, is that this money will cover the cost of additional officers and the, the cost of running this thing, which then would in turn present a teaming effort between the Crime Free Housing Office, the landlords, and everybody else, to actually focus on the problems that are around. Instead of pointing fingers, by doing this, there's, there's a teaming effort, in our opinion, in doing so. Hopefully landlords will be more engaged with the Crime Free Housing Office on how to address some of these things. Yeah, the landlord's feet are initially going to be put to the fire a little bit, and that there's expense involved. But I really believe, and Kevin does too, that we have done our best to defend the landlords and put the right face on this as we go forward, while still protecting the rights of the tenants. There's provisions in there that do this. Like Kevin said, we know that it will require some adjustment, but that's why we believe that the committee should meet every six months and look at different statistics about, in the same six months last year, there were a percentage of calls to the crime, to the rental properties. We would expect to see that decrease. Additionally, the city will be providing us finance reports that say, we took this much money in from the landlords, and here's how we've spent it, so that it does support the landlords and the crime-free housing program without becoming a fundraiser for other things, which is also why we have the sunset clause on there. This, we want that, our recommendation to the city council, or the committee's recommendation to the city council, before it expires in 2017, would be that we can present this to the mayor and to the aldermen and say, it has been effective, and it needs to be extended and continued. In fact, I would take personal pleasure in being able to tell the mayor and the aldermen that you no longer have a crime problem amongst your rental property, it's amongst your owners. That's a lofty goal. But I do believe that by those provisions that we have put in there, everybody's heat feet are held to the fire and accountable for everything that happens, and I do believe it will work.
Your Honor?
Question, and I've read and listened to the draft many times, but I don't pretend to have it as thoroughly as you all did. Did you, I don't think I read it, specify the ongoing committee particulars?
Yes.
Does it spell the numbers totally enough? I don't know what time I went through.
That's on, on the top of page two.
I'm sorry?
Page two, thirty-three, three dash two, Crime Free Housing Committee.
The mayor.
Alderman Hart, would you like to read through that?
Sure.
Go with that.
The mayor shall appoint the committee, and it shall consist of two property owners, two landlords, two tenants, two city council members, one licensed real estate professional, and one property manager. No two members shall be from the same company or entity. Now, I'd like to mention that the.
Did you discuss terms of the other committee, or is there no desire?
The committee shall be, it just, it doesn't say how long.
Okay. Okay, then the other thing, I just want to make clear for the, for the record here tonight. In having quite a discussion with my housing director, Bob Sable, and some of the police chief as well, I think I made it clear in the last meeting, we believe that providing this past moves forward, and I understand implementation's going to take a little bit, but we would start by hiring one police officer as soon as possible, additional staff that Bob has explained in the field we need in the housing office, and have money to see how the cost would be for the hearing officer. And then, after we see what we, we think would be the possible revenue, then we could look at the possibility of a second officer. But I just want to make sure everybody's aware of, you know, understands that, that we're, we're not able to go out before we see how this thing shakes out, and what the reality of the money coming in and everything is. But I think we're committed, or at least I believe I'm committed, if it's my call with the council, that, you know, we would definitely, as quickly as possible, try to get an additional officer hired, and the additional staff person that Bob feels he needs to do additional, pick the work of reporting, etc.
I would like to point out that if you take a look at that paragraph, the mayor shall appoint the committee, and it shall consist of two property owners. It is the intention of the committee that that be, not just property owners, but owner-occupied homeowners. And we would recommend that that word be changed to owner-occupied homeowners.
I think so, because then that shows somebody's stakeholder in the city, too.
Yes. Okay, at this time, if somebody would like to ask questions, feel free to come up to the microphone, and we'd like you to identify yourself, and give your home address for the records, and we'll open it up for any questions. It will be a back-and-forth thing. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Dorothy, 200 North 28th Street. Do you envision the police officers that you're going to hire from the force we currently have, and then are they going to be hired specifically to do the housing set-up committee hires?
Mr. Chairman, I think, and Dorothy, I think in all respect, that'll be the chief's calling.
Okay.
I think he runs the department. I, I'm guessing that he's going to take somebody with some experience, probably, who volunteers, who wants to be there, and put in that. But what this will allow then, by putting a third person currently in the housing department, and this particularly with the crime-free housing task, that we would have to hire a person, to make that person up on the duty roster.
My other question is, I, I've been to, so I was going to question the, the training. Are we anticipating doing that in-house?
One option is, the Metro East Landlord and Real Estate Investors Association will be offering this for anyone who wants to become a member, just wants to come. So it'll be offered all landlords who want to refresh or more, that don't have, like, you don't have anything in O'Fallon, you've never taken it. So our goal is to make it, some places have a six-hour training. We would love to see like a two-hour training. Now, if you've already taken it, we just have to know that you've taken it. We have to have you sign off and provide that certificate. So it's not meant to make them go through the ballot, this is my, the local ones.
It's also the intention that along with this class, you would receive a packet of information that's particular to the City of Belleville, and just general information. And if someone is, has currently taken the class outside of Belleville, that they'd still get that same packet, just because it's going, it's, they have to know how crime-free housing is set up in Belleville.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes.
Belleville Memorial Level 60, 8741. One other meeting, I thought you were talking about, I believe it was you, Kevin, or anybody who answered this question, that any police officer on duty, a housing officer, at hand. Can you explain that a little bit more?
So, so the landlord's not there, and the officer responds to one of my units, and the officer does more than just take the report and turn it into, we have two women right now currently, Sergeant Polkerson and Officer Donae, I believe is how you pronounce it. And they, they do the voluntary program, they do a great job. But it's not meant for them to be the only two crime-free officers. It's really going to be, to me, it's just as much about the landlords being on board, it's even more so about the police department being on board, and there'd be training, that basically, that officer who's out there at the apartment unit of mine, when I'm asleep, can say, let's see who's on the permits, and, gosh, as we, as we drove out here, our laptop said we've been out here four times this month, and each time it's something a little bit worse, a little bit more dangerous. So then that picture's painted for the officer, which increases safety. It also lets them know what to look for. And then on this rental incident form, if the officer has responded and done this right as a crime-free officer, when I actually get it from the Crime Free Housing Department the next morning, I can really see what happened. And then I can go back to the Crime Free Housing Office, it could just be a phone call, I might stop in. And we can make a game plan of, how should we address this? And that's what I like about crime-free housing, is when I bought some buildings, I can go in there and say, man, I, I know these units are a problem. We can sit down and figure out a way to deal with it. And, and it works out good. And sometimes the tenant may even have to come in and have a discussion with us. So that's where each officer really supposed to think a little, little more outside the box than on duty and on patrol.
So they don't necessarily have to wait for that housing office, or housing.
No, because the, the crime-free officers will be there, let's say, from eight to four, or whatever their hours are. So they'll be there for us to use during the day, but the officers, they're, they're all night and evening shift, they're the ones that are going to be feeding them, so they're kind of the funnel, the crime-free housing department.
So every police officer's going to somehow train them.
Every officer should, right.
Yes, every officer should be, should be thinking crime-free housing in their background when they come to there. They should be trained and know what to do of everything that happens. It's, it's not just the crime-free housing office. It's, we're looking for the whole police force to take on this action and attitude, to push it forward, to the crime-free housing officers who'll make their annotations and communicate it to us, the landlords, so that we can get on it a lot quicker. And, and a lot of it is, a lot of what we've written in here, and the intent of this rental incident form, everything else, is communication. Because I am a crime-free landlord. I got one of these this morning. Of course, my tenants all know that I, you know, if I'm calling and there's an incident, they're not going to answer the phone, I'm going to have to go over there and talk to them. And I will, on the way home, I'm going to knock on the door and let them know that this happened, no more. But it's that communication, and this is an incredible communication device, which comes back to the landlord and allows us all to track it, so that if it becomes a problem, then there's actions that the landlords have to take. It also allows the tenant to change the behavior and do what, what we all want, behave, and doing all this stuff. So it's, the communication starts with the officer on scene, through the housing office, the landlord, to the tenant, back to the housing office. The communication is huge in this thing, we've tried to build it so that's what works.
Alderman Hart.
Tim Carpenter, 4500 South Park Drive, number eight. I've got a few questions. I'm guessing there's probably approximately 10,000 units in the city, and twenty-five dollars a unit, that's quarter million dollars. Where's the rest of this money going?
Well, here's, here's, the first part is, is getting everyone registered. So that's not going to happen the first month. So we cannot say we're going to quarter million dollars right now. But like the mayor said, once we get the first 3,000 registered, we should have enough for an officer, benefits, patrol, car, gas. Then we get the next 3,000 registered, let's add that second officer. Then we get the other 2,000 or 3,000 registered. Let's get another support personnel. Do they each need administrative assistance?
Okay, so it's multiple personnel, how hard?
Right.
I thought I heard one officer.
Well, right now, they have two, but we want to add a third one, because the voluntary program that has a couple thousand units is already short-staffed. It's, they came to keep us like.
My, my second concern is, I think this is kind of overbroad and overpowering to say, shall not engage in any illegal activity. Now, if somebody's doing white-collar crimes, and financial fraud, or something on those terms, and they come, and they get arrested at the property, you mean to tell me that they're going to get evicted? Any kind of crime, white-collar crimes, this is, I mean, I understand the rest of this, it sounds good, no prostitution, no criminal street activity, or threatening intent, you know, unlawful discharge of weapon, but, I mean, to have any illegal activity, how are you going to enforce that? That's almost impossible.
I, I know that in Grand City, O'Fallon, Collinsville, Fairview Heights, they've only had to deal with the acts that, you know, infringe on the actual safety of people around you, you know, the actual neighborhoods. Right, this certain piece. So I really don't know if that's ever been dealt with, and I've never asked.
Well, I'm just, I mean, if there's somebody that's in organized crime, and they get arrested on the property, you mean to tell me they're going to get evicted, even though they haven't caused any problems in their neighborhood?
With crime-free housing, it doesn't mean if they have a single violation, they have to be evicted. It means that if they're continuing a mob action out of the apartment or home, yeah, it would probably lead to something has to be done. But it doesn't say that right off the bat, you have to give them a 10-day notice to move.
Okay, um, I'm just concerned that, you know, I know people that own hundreds of units. This is going to be $25,000 to $50,000 tax that they're going to be paying. That's a lot of money to ask one individual that owns a business.
I own 250 units, and I'm hoping to see this go in the county as well, the divide between the county and the city. What I'm going to see is an increase in the caliber of my applicant, because right now, people call me and they say, Belleville crime-free? No, it's not right, but it's going to be soon. I want, I want to apply with you. If you haven't seen the apartment, haven't seen the house, and they're going to be living next door to you. So it's, it's kind of upsetting. And I live in Shiloh, I live here in Belleville. And I live in Shiloh, I live here in Belleville. So I would really hope that, you know, Belleville gets on board because right now, when I have a few in, in O'Fallon and I've talked to the inspectors and the officers there, I go, well, where do you think the problem goes? Well, they probably go to Belleville in areas that don't have crime-free housing. I'm going to be seeing increased rents because my tenants are going to feel safer, which means I can give a yearly rent increase that is deserved because they can feel safer where they live. I'm going to see increased property values, which have really declined, especially in Belleville. So this is the best $25 and I get to let them know I'm babysitting them when I'm asleep. I got another person on duty, so I'm actually $2.07 a month. I'm pretty excited for this.
Additionally, the $25, there was, there was an incredible amount of debate on the crime-free task force before we came up to that. That's hands down the cheapest around. Most of the cities around, I know O'Fallon is 50 bucks and a lot of them are at the $50 rate. We felt that 25 was enough to cover the expenses, the problems that the program is going to incur in resolving some of these problems.
Oh, I mean, okay, that's a good, good answer, John. My, I'm just concerned, it not, if somebody engages in any, it just doesn't, the whole criminal activity part, if they're doing something, you know, in a different town, it's some kind of financial thing they did illegally and they get arrested on the property, they're getting evicted, correct? Something like that?
Mr. Carpenter, the, it's still up to the landlord to decide to proceed with an eviction on the tenant.
So it's not going to be automatic? I wanted to clear, that's what I'm trying, most things I'm trying to clarify.
What this does is gives the landlord an actionable offense to make a decision whether he does or he doesn't.
Okay.
It's still on him to go through the process of eviction of that tenant.
I thought that's what it was originally months ago, I just wanted to make sure that's still the intent, okay?
There are stipulations where the landlord will have to take an intervention event. In other words, if an occurrence or if there's a situation that occurs four times in a six-month period?
If the police have to intervene with the landlord and say, you've got a problem tenant and we're no longer going to provide or give you occupancy permits for other units that that landlord owns because of the events occurring at one particular unit, then that's, and then they start having to find it, the landlord for that action on that one property, that tenant, then the landlord's going to probably think he needs to evict that individual. But he can still not rent or not evict that individual if he desires.
Okay, that, that, that's sort of what I was, there's no three-strike policy, which, you know, some people have talked about it, so that kind of sounds like that would be something that would be potential on the future.
But we discussed that in committee, there's a.
There's a four, there is a four within six months strike, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, if, if the police are called to, to a rental unit, if the police are called to a rental unit four times in six months, yeah, you're out.
Okay.
I mean, that, that is there. I, I understand your concern, I suspect that rare will be the case where we're dealing with eviction related to white-collar crime. I'm sure.
Which is, I mean, there's thousands of people sitting in jail, you know, probably tens of thousands. And I just think something like that, you know, has no effect on local neighborhoods or streets. Usually, you know, nine times out of 10, it's just something that they did at the business.
Alderman Taylor, they pay rent, they're probably the best neighbors I would have.
That's all.
I would like to mention that on page nine, above lines, there's a, an important paragraph added here. "It is not the intent of this ordinance and it shall not be construed or enforced in any manner which would affect the tenancy of a tenant whose only involvement in an incident has been as the victim of a crime." For instance, the what-if comes up that, let's say that somebody is a battered wife and the husband comes back and hits her and she's a victim, okay? And we want to make sure that she's protected. We're not, we want to make sure victims are protected. This is not meant to force a woman out of her home if she's the victim of battery or something of that sort. So that's an important line in there. Yes, ma'am?
George Schreiber, 27 South 10th Street. My question just goes to background checks. My children are all grown and I, if I was to choose to rent a home to one of my children, do I have to run a background check on my own flesh and blood?
Yes, ma'am.
Really?
And, and the reason being is during our committee meetings, we've heard different sides of everything. One of it being, wouldn't this be nice if this could apply to the homeowners? We can't make it apply to homeowners, but we don't want to give an exception right off the bat. And as far, one of the, one of the toughest parts of what you're talking about, again, there were a lot of debate on it, was how does the city, when you walk in and you say, I am renting this property to my daughter, how does the city prove that that relationship exists?
Right. I saw the exemptions for nursing homes, dormitories, all of that is understandable. I would think that if I was going to rent a home stage to my mother, that if I brought my birth certificate and her driver's license and my driver's license and said, this is my mother, do I have to run a background check, that it would be easy enough to write an exemption for something like that.
Right, and, and, you know, there's, we've done other things, foster children, stepchildren, your children, you raised a niece, like a daughter. I felt as a landlord that if it creates potential loopholes, that could be abused.
Right.
Now, in six months, we may need to add that in.
Right.
And then I also felt that, and I guess just to be honest, you just have to sign off that you did it. So, you know, you know your kid's good and you're not going to go, you have to sign off that you're acknowledging that you've done a criminal background. If you didn't do it on your kid, you know, I, I won't know.
I, I wouldn't sign off on something and say that I did it if I did not do it. My point kind of goes to, to your employer, death in the family, if it is your parents, your blood sibling, you get, say, three days, you know, paid day off from work. If employers are able to say, set specific instances where there's exemptions, I don't think that this would be too difficult. I just wanted to know if that was already built in about the whole thing. Thank you.
Mr. Hackford? Oh, I'm sorry.
Michael Hackford, 701 Centerville. Couple things, in your section 33-3-2 where you say two times a year of the meetings, can we specify that it should be between five and seven months scheduled apart so that we can prevent the back-to-back meetings that would say, well, we had two meetings back-to-back and you really only had one per year?
Okay, I, I would, I would like to say that that could be tying our hands too because we may want to meet more often than that.
I think they might give them a minimum.
Yeah, I think that's the, I believe that's sufficient.
I'm sure we get some Berbers that says something to that.
Yeah, I just want to. It says that the committee showed a minimum of two times per year.
Correct. And I've seen before where, where things have been scheduled, the first meeting's at 5:30 and the next one starts at 6 o'clock.
Well, yeah, I know.
Yeah, it needs it, so.
But I think we would, our committee would be open for a lot of criticism if they tried.
No, let's, I don't have any problems adding to Berbers that.
You can get the lawyers, you know, you can work on that.
Every six months or something. Between, the two meetings, the six months between the two meetings, but not, but more meetings are allowed.
Two times per year spaced relatively?
Maybe each every six months or more often as necessary.
Instead of two times per year, we'll change it to every six months?
So we're saying every six months at the end of them?
Based upon?
Or as necessary. Yeah.
As necessary and then based upon the enactment or the approval, based upon the approval date of the ordinance.
Okay, so we'll go with, we'll get rid of two times per year and replace it at a minimum of every six months and then we go back to R as needed to review progress.
Well, it's actually, I heard in Berbers, R as needed.
That is R as needed, okay.
We'll say R as needed, something for the gating first part.
Okay. Brian, did you get that number, that property owners change to?
Uh, yeah, I probably, I would like, I, I was going to ask you to clarify that. I know you want to change it from property owners to owner-occupied.
Homeowners.
Homeowners.
Owner-occupied homeowners. To owner-occupied homeowners.
Okay, thank you.
Curious draft, I thought there was an exception for if you're renting your vacant house to one of your children?
Yes, there was, that, that was considered and that was withdrawn.
Okay, so even if you just have one house, you still have to take crime-free housing as a parent if you're renting it to your child?
Yes, the, the feeling was that there should be no exceptions.
Okay, and next, follow-up on Alderman Carpenter's, are you talking about somebody being convicted of a crime or just merely charged with a crime that would get them evicted?
Our paperwork says the preponderance of evidence. It does not say conviction.
And last, with the incident report, is this mandatory that every call, the officer will fill this out? They don't, the officer doesn't have?
It has the most ridiculous things on it sometimes.
That's fine. I'm saying right now.
It has the IOD.
If, if an officer stalks somebody, they have an option, you know, maybe a warning or I'm going to do a ticket. I know that we had an officer out in our neighborhood five times before I insisted that a report was drawn up on it. You call up the other four, there's no record of them coming out. They think, oh, this is the first time we're coming out.
It is the intention that the crime-free land, the crime-free program, this form would be required anytime they're at the rental property.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Kyle Anderson, I represent the, I live in Belleville, I represent the Realtor Association of Southwest Illinois. And I want to start off by saying thank you to Ken and the whole committee, even though we're easy ordinance draft, but you guys worked hard. Ken's always answering my phone calls or, and we've talked and not always agreed, but we've been open-minded and so I appreciate that, I appreciate your inclusion of one of our members as well on the, on the task force, so, and thanks, Trish, for starting off. I had a couple, a couple of questions. Overall, I think it's a pretty good ordinance. Fees, 33-3-17, so the, the fees associated with it, if the person gets a, the landlord or the property owner gets a parking ticket and when they're, and when they're coming right back around, they, they get a parking ticket, does that apply to outstanding fees that would potentially revoke their crime-free certificate?
This is, I'm, I'm sorry, if the tenant's has a.
So, no, so like the property owner.
The tenant's to the city, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, well, what, what, what fees or, or past fines apply to the possible revoking of that?
I would, I would assume that an outstanding fee owed to the city is an outstanding fee owed to the city. The idea of the crime-free housing ordinance is to actually bring everybody back in line and certainly landlords would be required to pay fees if we don't behave either. And so my assumption would be if you have an outstanding parking ticket, yes, it needs to be resolved before this could be approved.
And which, which housing is it going to apply to?
The one, the one that you're seeking to get an occupancy permit for now.
Well, there's several of them now.
Okay.
And then what, and then what happens to the tenant at the time? If, if, if the certificate is revoked, what happens to the tenant?
Okay, so let's just say I have an eighth family and I'm having, and I'm not going to, parking tickets, if I'm having crime in one of my units in my eighth family and housing can deny me, I can seek a permit on that one unit, they cannot make my other seven units move.
Well, it's already living there and then your crime certificate is revoked.
No, they can only do it for the problem unit. They cannot affect the rest of the people who are living there in peace. Now, of course, those other tenants can be very happy when that person moves, but.
Right, there will be, if, if something happens, like a, I have a fee or whatever, so the person's living there, it's not a problem, but I have a fee, I'm saying fee, I only own, I only own one property, I have not seen a fee, what happens to that tenant? Do they stay there?
They stay there, however, if you, if the property is vacant, you will not be able to rent it until your fees are paid to the city, parking or whatever they check on, whatever, whatever those might be. And certainly for those who have multiple units, if a condition exists where a landlord owes money to the city for one reason or another, that landlord would not be able to rent any new units until those fees are satisfied to the city.
And in all our discussions with the other towns that have this, that's never, that's never, no one's ever been denied that, but I've been told. In fact.
I, I'm just wondering if the tenants, if you've revoked during the process, what happens to the tenant? That's, so what, what happens to the, to the rent? They still paying rent to the person?
Yes.
Yeah. I know Ken kind of held fast on 24 hours, but I would ask that, that it be made to 48 hours of a notification to a property owner, so like if one person owns a house, I forget what section it is, I can find it again, but notification to the landlord to do something about a problem.
You mean like a next business day?
Yeah.
Like it's a Friday afternoon?
Out at 14.
And I think at one point, I thought that was going to be next business day. We're not cut out of page four, right? Our goal is not to have the police department call the landlord 2:00 AM and say, this is what you got to do. It's basically you would meet with the crime-free officer during Monday through Friday shift or by phone.
Well, I don't know, I'm talking about the.
33-10?
Yeah.
That's on page four at the bottom?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so let's all go there and see what your question is.
It's right now, it's a 24-hour basis. I would ask that to be a 48-hour basis.
Next business day. Should be next business day. So if it's a Friday, they got Monday.
Yeah, that's, that's what we ask, that's what we ask for, if possible.
Well, I, I have a question and that is, let's say a building burns down and we have to have somebody there to represent, I mean, the next working day seems like a long time. And it doesn't say he has to be present there, it just, you can call him, he can, well, he has to have somebody who will get there within 24 hours.
Right now, he still has 24 hours.
What's your pleasure group?
Anyway, my point was, you have a person who's registered to their family or whatever and they're all on vacation and they don't have a contact with that.
Well, the point is that you should have a contact. If you go to Disney World for a week or three days even, you should have a contact of some sort or so. That's our consensus, was it not? Is that what you do?
Right, if I go, if I go out of town for 10 days, I should have someone that's going to be able to step up and say, you know, be, and so I'm fine either way and this makes me something that we keep 24 and we add to next business day if it's not an issue, I'm fine either way. Right. I, I, I can see either way, I, I don't think this is going to be something that's going to really hurt us either way.
It says here that this requirement may be met by maintaining operating business or owner-residence within 50 miles of the city of Belleville or by use of a local landlord or managing agent who resides within 50 miles of the city of Belleville, either of whom can be contacted on a 24-hour basis. So they have to be able to be contacted on a 24-hour basis.
I just want to, I think I appreciate that, that local contact and all that stuff. Because I was saying, like, my brother, he's sick and he doesn't need to talk. I'm, I'm one hell accountable. I know that that seems like a small idea, a small potato, but I think it is a concern.
Right, and our, our concern is, is these have gone, these, these can go out to a large property owner and not get responded to very quickly. In the meantime, other bad things are happening that's affecting the rest of the good tenants and as a property management company, they would want to know that quickly. I, I kind of like the 24 hours to keep the communication flowing, you know, thinking about this, so.
I would, I would agree. I would like to see this remain 24 hours, but I do believe that the committee that meets every six months after its enactment should question this and see if it's an issue. I really do, because if it is an issue, it needs to be looked at one way or the other.
I love that, I love that. Okay, and then tertiary crime, so like you said, Ken, I read the same concern from very beginning about domestic violence and that nature. I love that. I love that. Okay. Um, and then tertiary crimes, so, um, like you said, Ken, I read the same concern from very beginning about domestic violence and that nature. Um, so if, um, there are other crimes being committed in the home, um, when she calls for that, for the cops, can she be arrested or can that, can that tertiary crime be held against her? Because the, the way I, the way I would see it or the way I would envision it, that that would be a deterrent of her calling.
That would be a police call. That's.
I, I think the ordinance should address it. Uh, 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 in my opinion, I mean.
I.
I, I, I think, I think it would be a deterrent for them to call. Because, because in my opinion, if, if there's like tertiary crime being committed, she's thinking, you know, she's gonna be, she's not, she, she might call the cops, might just hold it out so that people can, you know, one of the things cool, something of that nature.
And you're saying that we would say that she can't be, probably obligated?
It might, it might be, it might be a deterrent of her calling when she's getting abused.
I, I, I'll start that over again.
Okay. So, say, say.
For instance?
Say those cases of domestic violence being committed. But it also a tertiary crime, say there's drugs, drugs in the home or something of that nature. Okay? If she can be held accountable for that tertiary crime, she might not call.
Well, she's doing illegal activity. If, if she's partaking in drugs and getting beaten, the getting beaten part's not, that's, we don't, uh, we protect the victim.
She's a victim.
But if she's using or dealing drugs out of there, then she's in violation of the crime free housing ordinance.
Right. Okay. You already heard, you already, so you already heard shoes between, go to jail, get me.
No, I'm making, if she's doing criminal activity, then she's violating the lease, then that needs to be addressed between her, the landlord and the police department to figure out. And, and that's all, that's what I like about this program. Right now, it's kinda, things are in limbo when you get police calls unless you're on the voluntary program. With this, you actually can sit down and, and get that picture painted and get the feedback of the officer that was there. So that, that's a big deal.
Well, I, I, I see it happening, it happens a lot where the, the wife might not even know that, that, that the, the crime thing was made.
Well, my thought would be if, well, let's look at it as it is now. I mean, she would be running a risk now of being arrested if she called because she was being abused, if she had drugs in the house.
That the landlord exists, I agree.
But, so, uh, but this, and I, and I understand that, but now it might be a deterrent because she, she could, right now, because she could get out of the house.
Actually, it's still up to the landlord whether the, the.
Right, right now, it is?
Or not, even if it's ordinance.
Then why, neither the ordinance?
Cause the.
What's the ordinance?
We're requiring that the landlord be made aware with the mandatory background check of who he's running to, or who the, who the landlord's running to. And also make sure that the landlord's made aware of when incidents occur at the, at the, at the property.
Without this ordinance, as it exists right now, in that exact circumstance, she's going through that same decision process as to whether or not she's gonna call the police. And when the police show up, she stands a great risk as it stands now to be arrested for the drugs. That's not going to change with this ordinance.
But the, the likelihood of being kicked out is, I'm sorry, she, she, right now, she's not causing a predicament of, of being beaten and kicked, kicked out of her home. Crime for the beating.
In, in a situation similar to what I had that you're describing, once the, the son that was involved with the drugs, uh, no longer resided there and through communication with the crime free, we figure that out, then the tenant can stay, you know, it's, it's, and sometimes you have to weed through who's the problem child here.
But, and, but, and that's what I'm asking for, is that if it's not her drugs, I mean, if she, if she, she's living in a house where she's getting beaten, do you actually try to have the four or two bills painted up and say, get the drugs out of the house?
Would the police, would the police sort that all out? Would they come to that apartment and, and do their investigation?
I, I, I would, I would hope so, but.
And in the.
That assurance even made that, but that's, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking for that assurance to, to, to be done. Right now, that, that assurance doesn't.
This is such a great area. What, what I can say is.
And that's why it needs to be addressed.
If you have several, if you have a daughter and you have the mom and the mom's getting beaten and it's the daughter, the drug user, through crime free housing, we're gonna figure out that the mom's the victim, they need to be protected. And the daughter who's doing the drugs could end up getting the mom kicked out, or maybe the daughter should go to rehab and stop doing illegal activity at the unit. That, that's the only answer I can give you on this.
And additionally, by putting into this ordinance, what you want us to do would provide an additional protection against an existing crime that, that we can't provide that protection now. That, that, that protection does not exist for the tenant right now. So by doing that, you're giving an additional cushion to potential drug activity or illegal activity of sorts.
I'm trying to help with the decision between, uh, uh, being, being made by that person. But, but right now, the, the likelihood of being kicked out is not there. Am I correct?
The likelihood of what?
Being kicked out of the house. If she calls, she's not gonna be kicked out of the house.
And that's not true.
It's not true.
The landlord can still kick the individual out of the house as, without even, without this crime free housing ordinance. If, if the individual's arrested and the landlord finds out about them being arrested without this ordinance, they can still decide.
Her fourth, her fourth strike, though.
No, with, without this.
But if her, her fourth strike's mandatory, kicked out.
Okay. One of, right, one of the things we have to remember about this is that we have a hearing. We have a, a possible way that you can, if you don't think it's fair, you can have a hearing on it. We have a hearing officer. So you gotta remember that we have to have some sort of common sense. Also, we as a committee cannot give somebody a free pass if they've done a criminal activity. That would be totally up to the district attorney to decide whether or not to charge or not, and that's between the police and the district attorney. We can't write something in here that, oh, it's okay if you have a, a tertiary crime going on there, a peripheral crime or something. We, we can't do that. That would have to be up to a district attorney. Am, am I right there?
Yes.
No, thank you.
Okay. But, okay, I'm still, then, the, the new ordinance. So, so at the end of, the, the fourth time, she can't get kicked out, right? Because of that, or she's required to get out of it?
Well, if she, if she had four of these within six months, we've already been talking about something and I doubt that would ever happen, that they'd have four, because by that time, the landlord's involved and, uh, I'm sure that if she is a, is a true victim, that will come out through social workers and things of that sort. But remember, we always have a hearing officer and, and he has to be a reasonable person.
And that's for the person being evicted or forced?
A landlord.
No, that's for the landlord.
Yeah.
They're gonna be evicted through the, the court system. We're not evading anybody.
Right. So. Let, let me read the one paragraph here that's in, at the end of all that, that stuff there. Where it says, this is on page, uh, seven, page, the paragraph starts on page six, thirty-three, three, fifteen, but it continues on the next page. That last paragraph, balloon number six, says, "Any violation of the above provisions shall be immaterially irreparable violation of the rental agreement and good cause for immediate termination of this tenancy." Okay? Unless otherwise provided by lawful group violations shall be established by a preponderance of evidence. Nothing says they must be evicted. It gives the landlord the opportunity to look at it and, and, and go through to, to evict. Any questions?
Okay. That's a, that's a question. I, I present this obligation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, how was it, Ken? On, uh, this is the first time I've seen this one. Did you update one on the web and then change it to this draft or?
Yes, that revision's been on, uh, since we received this.
Okay. Cause I thought I downloaded the one on the fifteenth that didn't have all the changes on it. Um, thirty-three dash three dash fourteen, uh, in the paragraph below, you refer to thirty-three dash four dash fourteen. It should be thirty-three dash three dash fourteen. Thank you. And also.
See that, Brian?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. And just above that, um, you wanna do a comprehensive criminal search for the past seven years, including all known addresses. If you're a landlord just meeting this person for the first time, is that, what do you mean by all known addresses? Just the addresses that are provided by the tenant? Or are you supposed to do something?
When you do a background search, a comprehensive one, it will show up all known addresses.
Okay.
So you can get an idea of why did they live at this apartment, then moved two blocks over, then six months later never made it to the affiliate's lease somewhere?
That's not known addresses provided by the tenant to the landlord or something else.
They'll normally give you one maybe or two, but this will show, or it could be just where they had mail sent when they went to college, or this will show any addresses affiliated with that tenant.
Okay. I was taking it to mean that those be addresses provided by the tenant and that would be an issue. So, thank you.
First, Mr. Chairman, I, I do also want to, uh, thank the committee members for their, uh, time and diligence and volunteer service over, I don't know how many months they've been doing this. It's been quite a while. Uh, I, I believe that this is gonna be a, a positive, uh, thing for the community. A couple of questions. The one statement was made, we received four, four calls in a six month period. Can, can you elaborate on that? You know, are these calls gonna be qualified? Do we have a page number for that?
I, I know what these are. These, these calls are not gonna be, um, four calls of the music's too loud. Okay? You got, you know, a tenant that doesn't like the TV turned up and they make four calls. These should be calls in which it starts as potential criminal issues and it escalates each time. So it's, uh, it's not a car parked on the front lawn. It's not, uh, someone left their newspapers piled up. These should be calls that directly, uh, would affect the safety and welfare of the rest of the tenants or the neighbors in that neighborhood.
With, with these mandatory RIF reports, how are those gonna be coordinated then?
These are gonna tell you every little thing, every little thing. If a cop gets called out for just, uh, I, you know, during the snow day, kid's playing in the foyer, you know, the parents will let him go outside. I got a rift on that, cause one of the single people, you know, that bothered them. So you're gonna, you're gonna get a rift on every little thing. So.
And it's gonna be a communication, again, between the housing office and the landlord as to what we do about it. Uh, okay, if it's four times because they're in their front yard, loud music, drinking beer, disturbing the peace at two o'clock in the morning, action should be taken. However, if it's the neighbor who's angry because your kid balled, rolled into their yard four times in a six month period, no. You know, there, that's where that communication should occur. That's what this is driven for. That RIF form should drive communication between the housing office and the landlord as to how we're gonna resolve this situation. The good part about the RIF is we get good things out of it too. Uh, in other words, I've had them where they wrote down that, uh, they were called to the, to the apartment unit to report the theft of a bicycle. Doesn't sound like much, but a couple of days later, I had a lawnmower stolen. So now we've got a track, even though they weren't the same unit, we've got a track. This, this form is a way to start communication between the landlords and the housing office to, to get control of the situation, whatever the situation is.
So those of you who, who'd like to look at that again, um, it's on page eight, thirty-three, three dash eighteen, and it's under letter B, and I'll read that, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
"The commission of four or more violations of city ordinances within a six month period within the rental unit are uncommon areas related to the rental unit." So it's violations, not calls?
Yes.
Violations.
Okay. Yeah. I just.
Thank you.
Initial, I, I thought I heard initially four calls.
Sure.
Make sure that we're clarifying that. With, with my concern is, as you know, Mr. Chairman, we, as we're trying to do something destructive, we, we do have neighbors that don't like each other.
Yes.
And, and if they don't like somebody, they'll just call four times.
Yes.
Four days in a row trying to, to get rid of them. We certainly don't, uh, want that happening. It is our basic premise that there will be common sense used.
And sometimes I get a rift where loud music was called and, well, the officer will say, uh, "No loud music when approached the building." Uh, tenant, you know, said, "Did you want to come in and, and did you need?" And you can tell when it seems like, uh, it was not really something that's alarming. It all gets put down in the report, so.
Another question, we've had some questions already on the, uh, the background check issue. I, I certainly can empathize with the, the committee with, you know, the, the old saying, once you make an exception, you have no rule. Uh, you did make exceptions for, uh, types of housing that, uh, are not, uh, quantified under this. And I, I still believe that, uh, some consideration needs to be looked into, uh, again, as it relates to the family members. And this will probably be something further discussed when we get to, to the city council. Uh, the, the biggest question that, that I've got, and this is a question that has been raised to me, is, is I certainly understand what the goal and objective of the, uh, background check is, but if there's no verifiability other than the, the landlord is checking off a box saying that they did, where is the, the purpose of the T to, to even create this, uh, requirement? What, what is the functionality and enforceability of it? If we have no verifiability of it, other than them just checking a box saying that they, that they did. Because my concern is, as, as we're going through this, is that the people that we're, we're dealing with and we're trying to, for lack of terms, get rid of and out of our city, and, and the landlords that, uh, it is, the term is used, bad landlords, which I believe is a minimal, I think ninety to ninety-five percent of landlords in this city certainly do a great job and wanna do a good job. But, uh, those that, uh, are gonna continue to abuse it are not gonna do the background checks, uh, ladies and gentlemen. In the meantime, we're, we're creating an expense, a, a paperwork trail, uh, things that the city has to keep track of, and just trying to get, and ascertain from your.
What, what is, what is we gonna gain by that?
So where the T is, if you're a landlord who is putting people in, you don't care, uh, any background checks, you're signing off that you're doing them, cause this is an honor system. You're gonna have a bunch of these and they're gonna show criminal activity. You're gonna fall within the four times in six months. You will not be able to rent out future units, which means you will lose the revenue. Uh, you will be brought in to have, you'll be, have several meetings with, uh, the hearing officer with crime free housing. So, yeah, then there's the fines that, that you'll get. Um, so the T is, is if, if I'm a landlord, I gotta make money or else it's not gonna work. So the T is, is you, you cut me off for making money because I'm, you, you might look police department too much and crippling the neighborhood safety wise. So it's got, the, the place to get a landlord is where it's the, the pocketbook. And you only hope that they're using, you know, good evaluation tools and their apartments do not, uh, decline the neighborhood, that they actually, you can drive past it and not tell if it's a rental house or an owner occupied house. So, but yeah, there, there, that's the four strikes within six months.
Yep. The, the additional thing on there is under the paragraph thirty-three, three, thirteen on page five, talks about the U.S. comprehensive criminal search and says that you gotta do it on these people. The bottom paragraph there says, "The owner, landlord, managing agent is required to keep the U.S. comprehensive criminal searches on file as long as the tenant occupies the unit." So if they needed, they could ask you to reduce it. Uh, the idea behind this is that if the landlord looks at the criminal background report and sees that the guy has been moving or the gal has been moving every four or five months, obviously that's a skipper. He's staying in long enough, not paying rent, moving on and so on. Additionally, there is things in the background when you do that that cause me, as landlord, when I'm interviewing my prospective tenant, to explain that circumstance. And it's amazing what you can find out. Some of it's good, some of it's not good. There are actually tenants who, uh, when they find out that I'm going to do a criminal background check, they say, "Don't worry, I'm gonna go find another landlord." And I'm happy with that.
Yeah, that's good.
So, uh, if, if the landlords do this, I really think that the landlords will be looking at data that goes, "Oh, he didn't tell me about that." And they will start to see the benefit in doing this also.
Um, I, I would imagine also, if I, I.
Yeah, sure.
I would imagine that if something came to a hearing and the hearing officer would ask to see the file, that would be a violation not to have it in the file. And that would be a final violation.
And that would be a final violation, I guess, if that's such a word.
Looking at page seven, and it's the first paragraph after the six listings, states, "Any violation of above provisions shall be material and irrevocable violation of rental agreement and could cause for immediate termination of tenancy." So if I'm reading this correctly, and again, I want to thank all of you committee members because I did submit what I labeled the three-strikes program that I thought was an aggressive but fair program. Is it, if I'm reading this correctly, a landlord theoretically could evict somebody for one violation. Is that correct?
If it's serious enough, a serious enough felony?
Well, then it doesn't differentiate between, it doesn't differentiate between...
Yes, yes.
I mean, basically, it says, "Can I engage in any illegal activity?" You know, so theoretically, if Mom and Dad are out of town and they leave the seventeen-year-old in charge with the thirteen-year-old, you know, sibling, and they have a blowout party, unknown to the parents, the parents could come back and find that they're evicted. If the tenant...
Yes, that is a possibility.
If the landlord, I just want to make clear, I'm not arguing for or against. I just want to make sure we understand the ramifications, what's happening here.
This would allow the landlord to consider that and evict, yes. It wouldn't require me to.
But it could happen.
Could happen, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, could I clarify? Thank you.
Please.
If the parents were gone for a weekend, they came out, they came back, they found out that there was a party, they're not going to come back and find out that they're evicted. I mean, the landlord could choose to take action in certain court here, but nothing's going to happen overnight. I mean, we're, this committee isn't forming an ordinance to evict people. We can't do that.
Right, no, no, I'm not saying, but they, they wouldn't be evicted by then they got back. But what I'm saying is the landlord would have the ability to set in motion the eviction process.
Again, if they felt that there was a violation of this addendum, which could be part of the lease, and they could convince a judge, yes.
Couple more. Has this committee looked at, as it relates to the twenty-five-dollar fee, has there been any proposed budget that you have looked at as it relates to what the money's going to be used for?
Like we talked about earlier, if you have roughly eight-plus-thousand rental units at twenty-five dollars a unit, a couple hundred thousand dollars should give us at least one officer as we get the first registrations in, another officer, then maybe some other support staff. And that's all, as we talked about earlier, needs to be given in a budget form that shows the revenue coming in and showing that the officer's dedicated to the, and expensive the program. So this officer is not going to be hired to do a bunch of parades and other things and then be part-time housing. These are dedicated officers that are working with the landlords.
Now, I would like to point out that they're still under the authority of the chief of police, and, you know, it's not meant that the landlords make their schedule part of them, okay? They're still police officers.
And on the RIF reports for all incidents, that was discussed with the chief as well?
Yes, he saw that.
And he was comfortable with that? Thank you very much.
Okay, is there a guest?
My name is Lily DiMuzi. I live at 201 Norris Twenty-Eighth Street in Belleville. I have one single rental house, which we have, my husband rented from nineteen sixty-six. In two thousand and seven, ordinance, city ordinance number sixty-eight, twenty-two, there was a licensing fee required, excuse me, this is not too good. One, two, three, or four, up to four, units, was ten dollars per unit. From five through ten, it was fifty dollars total, and eleven and more units was one hundred dollars. Now, in two thousand and seven, I paid the ten dollars. Two thousand and eight, when I got my bill, I went up to the city hall to pay it, and the city treasurer said, "Forget it, they're thinking about repealing it." Was that ever repealed? Because I haven't paid it since.
Your Honor, if that was repealed, ma'am. And what happened there, that was for different purpose. We didn't have the crime-free housing purpose behind that at the time. At the time, that fee was designed to help place some leverage on outstanding bills, particularly sewer bills. What happened was, that was droughted, and Mr. Turner was able to work with the water company and finally get the shut-off of the water in place. So the city was no longer out those large amounts of money that we had been in previous years. So that was an attempt, but we admitted it didn't work. And the best solution for getting people to pay and not having extreme amounts of money over to the city was when we got the cooperation from the water company.
Well, we always paid the sewer bill for the...
You were one of the good ones.
Okay, yeah, but the way things are going now, in two thousand and seven then, my son decided that he did one with Mom and Dad anymore. So I said, the house was vacant, and I have never had a problem with tenants, never. But the house was vacant, so he moved in, my son. Okay, he's been there and out for five and a half years. So do I still have to go through the crime group stuff?
If he'll be grandfather then, if it's going to be all new...
It will apply to new renters.
There won't be new renters, because if he moves out, the house is going to be sold.
I understand, but this is, this ordinance, if it all takes hold, will be for all new...
Yes, she would have the twenty-five-dollar-a-year fee, that's true. But she doesn't have to do a background check or anything, because that's only for new renters.
Do I, will I still have to pay the twenty-five dollars?
Yes, ma'am. And you will have to go through the training or somebody in your family.
Are you kidding me?
Ma'am, yes, yes. And we've designed it, we think it will be painless, actually. There are things to actually...
I wouldn't blame every landlord in Belleville for selling their property or giving away.
Actually, I would want to buy more property in Belleville now that I know we're going to hopefully get crime-free housing.
You know what happened to housing years ago when property was cheap, especially small houses? A bunch of people, wealthy guys, bought up all the little houses cheap, rented them out, didn't care how they were taken care of, long as they had their money coming in. That's what ruined housing in Belleville. Now, you talk, okay, this is kind of discriminating against tenants, too, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, ma'am, the...
Because what about the homeowners who have people breaking the laws, selling drugs or causing a disturbance? What about the homeowners?
Again, ma'am, as...
You don't know them out of their house?
As I said at the beginning of this meeting, we had a lot of people like you who felt that, who really would like to see this ordinance apply to the homeowners. Unfortunately, we can't make that apply to the homeowners. We, this ordinance...
You'll figure a way.
This ordinance applies to landlords and tenants because there's a leverage system there that can work.
I'm almost beginning to think that you'll figure out a way for Belleville.
I, I would...
Hope I'm wrong.
I would not have an issue with finding a way to get rid of owners that are violating drug laws and stuff like that as well. But unfortunately, this ordinance cannot extend to that reach.
Another question I want to ask, so if a landlord is having a problem with that and wants to evict a tenant, how long does it take to evict them? And how much money does a landlord have to lose before they can evict someone?
It varies, you know, obviously depending on whether or not you hired an attorney. But if you wanted to evict someone, I...
So you have to pay an attorney?
I didn't, no, I did not say that. I said, it depends whether or not, if you decide to hire an attorney. But there's simple forms at the courthouse that you can do. I think to file one, it's probably, I'm guessing here, it might be about a hundred and fifty dollars to file the complaint in certain court, and that's just some time. It's usually about two court appearances, one at the minimum.
And how many months does that take, thirty minutes?
It's expedited procedure. Once you file, you get your first court date probably in a couple of weeks. If the person requests a trial, you can get it within another week or two. So at the very most, you're probably looking at thirty days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Parkman, Honorable Department.
This question, when is this plan on going to public health housing next? Is that proper protocol and then ordinance?
Actually, we were thinking it would go right to ordinance. That's, that's, Your Honor, we're...
When this was formed, this was, health and housing has had it, and then we've got a task force. The understanding and the commitment was to have, to work through it, come up with a plan, a draft, have a public hearing that we're having here tonight, and then, really and truthfully, the intent really was to take it back to council. We can, you know, this has been going on, someone said a while ago, for probably, what, five months?
Started in August or September.
Probably six months. I mean, we've had good attendance. You've got nine aldermen here tonight. There's been a couple of meetings where we've had that many or more. I think once they get these final changes in the draft, I don't see it coming to council the next meeting, but I think by the time the attorneys do it, give it back out to everybody so they have a little bit more time to look at it. I don't see that there's any procedure that says we've got to go back to two more committees. This has been, this has been too, they've had a lot of meetings for a lot of months. And I think it's, the understanding was that it would go farm the crime-free housing task force, which we did, and have a public hearing before it came back to council.
Oh, hi, hi. No disrespect to any of the members, but there's only two elected officials up there, and I think it should be a committee before it goes to city council.
Honorable committee, honorable mayor, city attorney, Mr. Brian Flynn. My name's Lee Griffin. I'm a businessman. I reside at 305 North Charles Street in Belleville. I'm a businessman, I'm a homeowner. I don't sell drugs. I don't have a lot of problems at my properties, but I've been boarded boarded with tickets. When you try to go into a situation like this, and we look at the demographics of the community, we have an African-American population here of thirty percent. Yet, we don't have nobody on this committee that represent minorities or people of low economic status. Over in housing, we have approximately twenty inspectors, officers, barfield, retired detective, Mr. Sabo. We don't have an African-American paper pusher here. If you want to validate this, you need to have some people of color on these committees. And I'm encouraging African-Americans to come out and get involved to what's going on here, because a lot of people in the community is thinking this is just a way to harass people because they came up the hill there. Now, the Justice Department came here approximately around nineteen ninety-three, and they mandated that the city, who had a history of one-hundred-and-seventy-five years of not hiring minorities, hire minorities. Right now, when I talk to Mr. Human Resources, Mr. Jim Schneider, and I look at all the equal employment opportunity commission statistics, you only have fifteen African-Americans, one year, twenty. So this is not people that's really going out to try to get the best of the community. One thing I like about the late Merrill Justice, he went out and took the eclectic approach. He got the best Hispanics, Asians, and everybody. I've had to file complaints against Officer Foulkerson and Officer Brenda Dunay. Before she, Brenda Dunay, went into housing, took my Sabo place, I had a great relationship with her. Soon as she got there, you know, she told me, "Mr. Griffin, they're mad at you because you're a black businessman in this community, and they're out to get you." I got boarded with tickets. I'm still in court right now. When I filed a citizen's complaint against Officer Foulkerson for harassing me, knocking holes in my doors, circuiting the Fourth Amendment, and I went to the mayor, my appeal fell on deaf ears. This is what the African-American community is thinking now. Hey, they're just trying to do this to harass us. Our life's observations and experiences might be a little different from you guys. You guys might want to play poker, we might want to play a course called Tump for five cents, just to have something constructive to do. Once you get landlords in a position where they don't like Lee Griffin, you've got to evict them, then the eviction procedure is out the window. We've got a good system right now. But I think this is rushing into something, and we're trying to find out what's the underlying motivation here. What's the rush? Just because we're in the city has it, don't mean it's right. You don't have no civil rights groups, and you're talking about twenty-five dollars a unit. None of that's money going to sensitivity training for some of those people over in housing. Again, you don't have a black paper pusher. I know you can say, "Well, that's Clay's job to appoint officers." You've got African-American officers over on this force, who would love to be over there. And when you have these inspectors coming out, they don't always come out with police officers. Officers come out by themselves, they harass you, they write tickets, they do all kinds of things. We want everybody to be safe in this community. I still think the best is yet to come. But I think this is all about harassing people, because you are sincere. You look at that housing department, and you integrate that. We don't need a good old boy club. America's going to be watching you guys. God's going to be watching. It's just not harassing people of different ethnic backgrounds, of different financial status. You know, you don't have, you just don't have no validation when it's an all-white. I'm the only African-American in here right now, and I'm listening to this stuff. And I ask you guys to take your time and don't rush into this, because you're going to have more problems. You're going to be back in sixty minutes again, because this is ridiculous. I mean, I can understand crime is a major concern, but that's dealing with, because of the fact you've got a lot of drugs that perpetrate our society. I talk to inspectors all the time. I had a great rapport. But when this young man came here, he came out to my house, and I don't even think he knew what he was doing because he was telling me, "Hey, Lee, this is my job. Mr. Sabo, I'm going to write you up for a tree that's down on your property." Well, that property was nine thirty-five, Greenmount Lane. That tree had been down on that property for about four months. The first officer, or inspector, I'm sorry, Kevin Parker, had passed that up. But he came out and threaded me with tickets. I stay in court. I'm trying to make an honest living. I don't make sixty thousand dollars a year, but people are looking at you guys and say, "What's going on?" If you had some people of color over there, and I'm going to see race, because if I do, it's a dump. But I know, in housing, let me finish.
Would you bring it back to the topic, please?
I'm bringing it back to the topic. If you're going to do this thing, you need to get some people involved. You need to poll the community and see what they're concerned, because these officers have a lot of influence over there. And they influence the inspectors, they influence the secretaries over there. And if they don't like you, and they can use these laws to hurt you, they're going to hurt people. So there's going to be a lot of disparity in treatment here. And we don't want selective application. If we were sincere, we've talked to Mr. Clay and said, "Mr. Clay, what's the problem? Can't we get some African-Americans?" If we're going to be hiring some more officers, and we're going to be doing this right now. Last year, we rolled almost four hundred tickets. Most of those tickets out of one-hundred-and-seventy-five was occupancy violations that happened with African-Americans. We're spending all this money, and it's like taxation without representation. Let's integrate that housing, because again, America's going to be watching you guys. And if we're going to do this, let's do it right and do it fair. And we know this is election year, but why rush into something? Because fools rush in, or angels really like them. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Jim Schneider.
Alderman Lee Schneider, two nineteen Kansas Avenue. Right on here is this ordinance number. For the month of February, for the month of March, there was no ordinance or legal meetings. Now, we should have at least been discussing this through February and March. I do not believe this should go through before the election. As I'm always told when I do something, "I'm grandstanding." Well, now, yous are all grandstanding. This should be put off until after the election. We did not have an ordinance meeting in February or March. They were canceled, saying there was nothing to discuss. Right here was something to discuss.
Excuse me, may I respond to that, please?
Yes.
We don't have an ordinance number on this because... We don't have an ordinance number on this because we don't know when it's going to be passed, and when it is, they don't be granted an ordinance number. And we have taken this quite slowly, and I have no problem with waiting until after the, the election. Also, however, uh, if we want to take it to ordinance, we are going to take it to ordinance.
I think we should take it to ordinance before it's passed.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, maybe Honorable Schneider didn't hear me a while ago, but I said at a minimum, I don't believe this should come to the council until the fifteenth, at a minimum. Now, if the council wants to put it back through some more committees, that's fine. But these meetings have been going on, and up until now, we just now got the final draft so for the, even for the ordinance committee to finally look at. Are any council members...
We could have been talking about it.
You could have been at these meetings, they were open to the public, this working committee. And, and many aldermen did come in and out, so they've not been secretive. Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I'm not gonna go on long, but, Mr. Griffin, I am gonna say, you, you did say that you filed a complaint with me, and I immediately told you the procedure, and your complaint was taken to Chief Clay. And Chief Clay finally responded to you, correct?
After four months.
Okay. But Chief Clay dealt with it thoroughly, he and Captain Moody. If I'm not mistaken, Chief Clay and Captain Moody are African-American.
I have to...
We had Sergeant, we had Sergeant Parish Marshall in housing for years. We have rotated a black officer in there, he was there for quite a few years. And so, I don't want you to leave the statement here so that the press and other people think that we have not, uh, given opportunity to black, and just because somebody would go in there, into the housing office because they're African-American, I hope you're not assuming that they're automatically going to fix all of your problems for you.
I don't have any problems.
Okay. But I'm just saying, I, I don't want it to be said that we are not following hiring practices, or that we're not being open-minded. I have an African-American police chief that I'm very proud of. We have, we have African-Americans in many departments. Uh, and we're open to certainly more qualified people of all color and races to apply for jobs as they do become available. And we advertise according to Lee, according to the justice standards, and we follow that and take that very seriously.
Can I say something to revolve on that? You said something about the findings, and I appreciate the time that Captain Moody and Chief Clay gave to my complaint. In my complaint, I alleged harassment, blackballing me...
Excuse me, sir. Would you move up to the microphone?
Thank you very much.
Because I'm sure that you're not gonna be able to get that on tape.
Thank you very much.
If you'd have to, would you mind starting over?
Yes, sir.
Because we do want to get it recorded.
Good morning.
This is Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. Thank you, again, Mr. Consula, Chairman of this board, this nice Tribune. What I'm trying to state is this, when I filed that complaint, it took four months for them to investigate that complaint. My complaint alleges harassment, blackballing by Officer Fulkerson. Officer Fulkerson went to a property that had, let me bring it up what happened, that had nothing to do with me, 621 Clay Street, and told those tenants not to rent from Lee Griffin, that Lee Griffin was a slumlord. She was in there on her official capacity. She had no business bringing my name up, because she had a personal dislike for me, per se. I got affidavits. When the chief came back after four months of me running around as a taxpayer waiting on a decision, he came back and he told me, you know what he said? Yeah, it was unfounded on harassment. I can't do nothing about what's going on as far as the hiring practices over there in the housing department. He stated that in that complaint, that I can make you preview of here. But he said that Officer Felkerson, where she alleged, and she admitted that she told these people not to rent from Lee Griffin, that Lee Griffin was a slumlord, and that was unfounded, nothing happened. Now, if I go in the store tomorrow and I steal something, and I kept getting my hand caught in the cookie jar, and I found it for that, they're not gonna just say, "Hey, Lee, just go home." They're gonna arrest me, and I'm gonna go through, I'm gonna, it's gonna be adjudicational. What's gonna happen with Ms. Felkerson, since she has been found guilty of telling people not to rent from me and singling me out as a landlord? Is any action's gonna be taken? And see, that's the big picture that I want you guys to see. When you have officers over there, and it's all police-oriented, people that want to harass you, or want the landlord to get rid of you, they can put pressure, they can exert pressures on the landlord, it's like a David and Goliath. If you don't like that landlord, or you don't like his tenant, and you tell him as the city official, "We want that person out of there," regardless if he's getting income, if that's his livelihood, he's gonna get that person out of there, because like some people have...
Is there anything more laundering here? We want to get back...
Well, I'm just, I'm gonna finish up then. Like, some people might have twenty units, and they're not gonna risk all those twenty units, because when they go up in there, if, if those people in the housing department is not pleased with them, they're gonna set the pace and the attitudes of everybody in there. So if we want to do something positive, let's get some people in there, let's get some minorities. I don't care, let's get some, try to get some African-American police officers. Let's get some minorities over there. And then, let's try to move forward.
That's not part of this committee's...
Okay. Well, and, and closing, and thank you for your time, again, I wish you the best in all your endeavors. But do you think, was any actions taken against Officer Fulkerson, since she was so involved in what was going on on my complaint? Was any actions taken against her? As you know, Mr. Sabo, since she works over there with you, was any action taken against Sergeant Fulkerson for telling people not to rent from Lee Griffin?
I believe that's a personnel matter, and I believe we're allowed to...
Well, Mayor, can I answer that question? Was any actions taken?
I think Mr. Consula is correct, and I think we're questioning there, and I think the chief told you, he will gladly have conversation with you.
Oh, goodness.
Mr. Lee, one thing I just want to respond to you on is, in the follow-up committee, would you ask for two, you know, Belleville tenants to be on it?
Thank you very much.
We want, we want to know from their perspective.
Uh-huh. And then, the final adjudicator, when we go to court right now, we have to deal with him, used to be his dad, and I have nothing but respect for this young man. I think he's a great attorney, I think he's doing a good job for the city. But who's gonna be the judge? Is the judge gonna be a minority judge? Who's gonna make the final decisions on all this stuff? Because I think, right now, you guys are moving too hastily on this, and you haven't got all your ducks in a row. So again, I would say, calm down. I think we have enough provisions in place right now to deal with any problems that you guys might foresee. But right now, people, especially in the African-American community, say, "Hey, background threats. Where is this officer gonna stop at?" And you're gonna, you have people calling all these names, and we talk about stability, "Look what you're doing, look at that housing department." And I have nothing but respect for this young man here, but I just don't respect what's going on when, when we paying taxes, but we don't have no people of color. And we know that you can get some African-American officers, if you're gonna hire some officers, I wonder if those officers are gonna be of the same race. Thank you very much, I think.
Is there anyone else who'd like to ask a question? Mr. White?
Uh, White, 2419 Couture Drive. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for your time in coming up with what you've had so far. I think this thing is gonna be a work in progress for some time, from what I've seen it, from what I'm hearing from you off there. I only have one question, and it was briefly addressed earlier by, by Mr. Flynn regarding the eviction process. I've had a couple of people talk to me and say that, uh, they differentiate from what Mr. Flynn said, they said they've experienced long periods of time trying to remove people that they have identified as in fact being problems. Uh, did this committee at all try to, uh, discuss that in any way? I realize there are legal implications that you have no control over, but is there, did some movement, like say, maybe, I don't know, in the past, if the council has addressed the possibility of maybe a city court or something, but any, any thought of doing that or pushing it forward?
There is talk of that, and it's very successful in Grand City. And, uh, we had a, a meeting, and the mayor had said that he's open to that. And, uh, we kinda want to get the first six months going, and maybe during that time, mirror what's been going on like in Grand City, because that does handle a problem quicker, and, uh, it's better with everybody.
Well, about three years ago, we had an extensive study of considering city court. Police officers, that time Jennifer Bean was Director of Housing, a number of people, myself, visited several cities and did extensive. After much, much research, we decided at that time, after sitting down and consulting with both of our attorneys at that time, that it wasn't going to pan out for Bellevue at this time. I said recently, and I said at this committee meeting, a month ago, or whenever it was last, three weeks ago, that I am certainly far investigating, it's been three years, some things have changed. One of the things three years ago that was a factor was, uh, we were in the, the threshold of a major budget crunch because of the economy, the recession. And, and we, one of the things that there was a lot of discrepancies on was how much it might cost us, the startup cost, to get going. And we, we didn't have a clear answer on that. There were several factors at that time. And, and city court does not mean, Brian, do tell me, that a person can automatically appeal to go to the circuit court. They, they do not have to, uh, to show up in city court. So, our leverage, when we learn that, now, some cities have a little different, they have some other scenarios that go with their city court, that give them a little bit more different, a different makeup than what we have. But, we're gonna look at it again. If, if, if I'm in a position here, I think it's time, the economy's changed, I think a few things have changed, I think we need to look at it, especially given when the council adopts this crime-free housing, I think, uh, all the more reason to study it again. But, but we did spend a lot of time. I don't want anybody to think, there've been comments made, that city court's gonna solve all. We spent a considerable amount of time and research, and came to the conclusion that at the moment, it wasn't right for Bellevue. And, and, so I just don't want anybody to think that it was not looked at seriously, because staff spent quite a bit of time researching in, in quite a few different cities.
I was just gonna piggyback off that. Talking about housing court, if we were to establish something like that, it would only have to do with, you know, housing violations, um, and fighting people. We could not establish a court to help evict people. That's not something we could do.
Yeah, and I think, I, I do acknowledge that, but I think that could be part of what's the problem, because I'm sure that, uh, with guesses on the landlords up here, have experienced, have seen problems well. It just seems to me that if it was possible in any way, that would put the teeth into what you're doing here, instead of just setting someone up, saying, "Can the victim," and three or four months later, they're still causing problems in your neighborhood. It just, just seems counterproductive, and, and I would just hope that somehow that we can come to...
And I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you on that, that it might be helpful if we could do it, but we're not able to do that. Uh, there, there's a state procedure, through the Code of Law and Procedure, I mean, there's nothing that we can do, even as a rural municipality, to deviate from that.
And, and a city court may tell, the hearing officer or magistrate or attorney or person has much more limited authority than that of a judge. A judge at the circuit courthouse can do things and can implement certain things that a, a hearing officer cannot. And that was one of the things our attorneys advised us, that they didn't think it was gonna be near the, nearest effective as what everybody was hoping for. Uh, it's not like you're gonna go in and be able to have a hearing officer have the same authority as a judge. It's just, it's not, it's not the case. So, we're gonna, my opinion is, we reinvestigate it again, because it's been three years ago. I think we, we, it's time. I think especially if we get the crime-free housing going, I think if we're gonna have a hearing officer already, as we've agreed in this proposal, it's probably a perfect time to go reevaluate the city court and concept. But, that too will take some time. But I, I just want to say, I don't have the exact dates in front of me, but I think this committee has, has taken its time, we're not rushing into anything. They've been very diligent, very faithful, and, and, uh, I think that, you know, when they're ready to move this forward, and I will talk with Mr. Flynn and, and Brian and his father both, uh, and make sure that we're not missing anything, but, um, like I said, we'll, we'll be back. This is not going to be put forward regardless before the elections. And I think I've made that clear a couple of times in the media and here at meetings. It's never been my intention, uh, to push this through before the election.
Thank you. If I may, uh, expand a little bit, you were, you were talking about the eviction process, sir. Uh, one of the things that we have found in other communities is that a lot of times, landlords don't really know the eviction process. And there are things that you can do as a landlord to speed things up a little bit. Again, part of that education package and the sentence of the crime-free housing things talks about what you can and cannot do, the privileges that you have, the rights of the tenants, and it can make it more expeditious for you if you follow those rules. As, as, it's just an awareness thing. Uh, when I became a landlord, I learned that, and it was like, everybody should know this.
Well, I hope that's the case, because a couple of individuals that I talked to said that, uh, some of these people get pretty cunning with the, with the way they deal with this stuff, so I hope there's an educational process that will overcome that. Thank you, thank you all.
Okay, to get back to the, the concept of when this should be presented and through what committees? Part of the idea of having the housing committee is to work with the housing director and formulate ordinances, et cetera, which we've already done. But if we want to, we could take this to housing on the third of April, that's a Wednesday, and we could discuss it at housing if need be, if you feel more comfortable with that, and that, that would be my recommendation. Also, we could take it to ordinance at the next ordinance meeting. Now, the ordinance meeting is, and my phone just went off, that's okay, it's Tuesday the ninth, which happens to be election night, I don't know if that's, uh, if that's gonna be a factor, we want to move that somehow.
I don't think, I think you have a problem with that.
Yes, I think we probably want to move that to a different night, but it could go to ordinance afterwards, if that's what...
And you could have a joint housing ordinance committee meeting set up, either on the third or some other date, and bring those two committees. It's not that this has been under a bushel basket. We've had many public meetings that, that opened to the vote, and, and some of them well-attended. And, and so, if you want to have a joint committee meeting, uh, before it goes to file over council, that's fine. But I, I just think that, you know, uh, there's no exact protocol that says we have to go back to housing, back to ordinance, and, you know, three more months or three more, three more meetings. I, I think you can certainly have the right to call a joint meeting if you want to have one last committee meeting.
Yes, sir.
Paul and Joe Hayden can, uh, first, uh, comment, uh, want to state, uh, tonight is, is the first time I've definitively heard that this would not be presented to the city council before the election, which I think is a good thing, I think that's a good thing. Because if it was, regardless of anybody's intentions, it would be perceived by the public that this was being used as, as a political, you know, tool, and, and that would undermine the hard work that you folks have done, and, and I think would undermine the integrity of what we're trying to do. So that's, that is good to hear, that that is not gonna happen. Uh, as a member of the city council, uh, Mr. Chairman and Mayor, I, I do believe that it should go before the Health and Housing Committee separately, because even though we've had the, the various meetings with the Health, you know, the, the, this task force, the Health and Housing Committee is a separate automatic body committee, and I believe that in that committee is when the aldermen, I stayed away from your people's, uh, meetings, and I made it known from the beginning when I submitted, because I'm gonna have a final vote on this. And I didn't feel as elected official that I should be in there pushing what you guys are doing, and that's why I stated my praise and respect at the beginning, because you guys have done a very, very, very hard work on this. But I do believe that it should go before the Health and Housing Committee, and then I do believe it should go before the ordinance committee at a separate time. Obviously, if it's on the ninth, I would strongly suggest that it be changed to, to a different, uh, date. And, and I, and I just want to state for the record, I think by, by going, Your Honor, Mr. Chairman, through those automatic committees, and through those checks and balances, you know, you've got various different members of the city council on, on the Health and Housing Committee, you've got various different members of the, uh, aldermen on the ordinance committee, and what I'm trying to say, Mr. Chairman, I think you understand, and we're gonna be able to, through those two committees, start building a, a more formal consensus of, of the automatic body of support of this before we get it to the council floor. And if there's any flaws further with the aldermen, let's flush them out so we can bring something that you people have worked very hard on to the full city council, and have something that we're proud of that's gonna work, and, and let's try to get, you know, a sixteen... And let's try to get, you know, a sixteen zero vote on at least the, the, the purpose of this ordinance. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one more thing to say from Lily and me, by the way. Why do you need a special housing police to investigate these crimes? If something's going on like drugs or fights, where are the police called? Belleville police called.
The police are called there, ma'am. This is the police talking to the landlords and letting them know. This is the communication tool between the police and the landlords. That's not, that most people don't use here in Belleville.
So is there just gonna be one or two police that does all-
Like we said in the beginning of the meeting, every officer in the city of Belleville becomes a crime-free officer. And it's gonna be worked from each side to make that rental house.
So what difference does it make who goes to arrest or take care of the crime? If there's a report filed, right?
It doesn't, it can be, any officer can, can make this program work.
It's just that the initial officer who goes to the scene fills out a report. And if there's follow-up, you would go through the crime-free housing officers. You'd go through the housing officer.
This, this would do a couple of things. It would allow the crime-free housing people, the officer on the street out there doesn't have time to track how often there's an incident at my unit. But when it comes into the crime-free housing people, then it does, they can sit there and say, okay, that's the fourth or fifth time in this much time, we really need to engage with the landlord to work on. That's, that's kinda the difference there is that that crime-free housing officer that we would hire or that the mayor and council would hire, chief would hire.
To me, it, it makes no sense if somebody's committing a crime in a rental unit or in a property-owned, a privately-owned unit. They should get the same punishment? And the landlord shouldn't have to pay for what the criminals are doing? Take them to jail and do what you have to do.
That, that holds true. The only difference is we get to see how much is happening where the landlords can actually start to evict if it's appropriate. We can't force this on the homeowners. We can force this on the landlords and on the tenants. Force is a bad word, but we can use that connection to leverage behavior that's inappropriate.
It just doesn't make much sense to me.
I'm, I'm sorry, it doesn't. I, if I lived in Belleville and I had houses around me that could become rental, I would, I would want to know that this program is next door to me. So I don't know how best to explain it.
A labor who was a homeowner and their kids was biggest little demons I ever saw. They eventually did move. But to me, it shouldn't matter if they're living in their own home or if they're living in rental property. If they're committing a crime, they should be arrested. It shouldn't be on the landlord's back.
Any other questions? Mr. Hager?
Michael Hackburg. First, thank you for the discussion of the city court. Um, that was informative. I had attended a number of the previous meetings and at one of them, I recall that they stated that a landlord cannot share the criminal report with anybody else, that it has to stay private with the landlord. You're shaking your head yes, is that true or? Okay, cause earlier you said that, you know, if an issue comes up, you want the landlord to provide that to the, to the hearing to say that they did run a check, so.
It's just that the board may sign off on it.
An affidavit had could be-
Well, the affidavit, but you said earlier, it's like if you sign the affidavit and you're in court, the, the hearing officer will say, you know, show me that report. And I was understanding that landlords cannot share that criminal report that they have on file.
I don't know, can, can they be subpoenaed to have to show that they did?
Yeah, I mean, it would be admissible in the hearing.
It would be admissible?
Yes.
Again, the idea of not sharing would be that it's between the tenant and landlord that stays there, we can't share it with other landlords or anything like that, or even with housing. However, if it became an issue, then we could have that, if the landlord wasn't maintaining it, it could be subpoenaed for that particular case.
Right, if it was at issue in the hearing, it could be brought in, but it's not an issue that no one-
All right, thank you for that clarification. Uh, next, are you planning on using the proposed record management system to track all of these reports? Or is there something in place now?
I think it's, you know, the intent that the new system that the chief has identified and I believe will be signed off by St. Clair County next Monday, will be in place probably about the same time or maybe before we're here. This program's totally up and running. So that coordination, as talked about, between the police department and housing, will be a major improvement to what we have right now.
Okay, I was just looking for the scenario where if it's something that's in housing, you're gonna need somebody twenty-four seven in housing to pull reports, but.
This, this new system that the police department has been trying to figure out, which one they wanted for two years, this system, what they've indicated to us, is the type of system that will work, integrate with housing and will track all this down.
Can you clarify, your wording on the council thing was a little vague. Did the council actually agree that they're going ahead with the, the setup and the monthly fees or?
The council has budgeted it, the council approved it.
Okay.
With the understanding that the, and now we passed the intergovernmental agreement with the county. It passed both committees the other night. And they tell me it's pretty much a formality for the St. Clair County to pass the last vote next Monday night, I believe.
Okay, I was just confused over the language. Could we revisit page eight, thirty-three dash three dash eighteen, paragraph eight? One of my concerns is says, four more violations within six months. I can see the housing officer go out there and in one visit, you'll issue a half a dozen violations. If each of those accounts as a separate violation, you could have one guy show up in the afternoon and boom, you've lost your ability to rent within the city. Could it be, I'll, I'll let you work out the language, but could it be specified that it's separate days or separate groups rather than just violations?
It can be, I mean, if that's to like, to be a subject of concern.
I think if this is explained, this is not four separate tickets for trash and for this. It's, it's basically looking at major criminal activity. If there's, if there's domestic, if there's a, if there's a major fight there, if there's a mob action, these types of things, they're gonna, those are what we're, they're gonna look at and say, this is getting pretty serious. It's endangering the neighborhood.
Okay, well, then it has to specify that because this just states four or more city violations and.
I, I guess if, if the tenant's that bad and has four issues in one day, that would be four issues.
Well, I'm saying they have violations where housing show up, you know, it's like, oh, electrical plate is missing.
No, no, this is housing.
This is not a bail and scuffle, this is criminal. This is criminal, yes.
All right, so should it state criminal on there or something?
Crime-free. It's not, it's not maintenance coaguary, it's crime-free housing.
Yeah, this says four or more violations of city ordinances. It doesn't specify which ordinances apply and which ones don't. I just need a clarification, think, you know, you can think about whether that should be clarified a little bit better. And I would also request that, since it's still going down, that if this does go to legal and ordinance, we have the attorney present that evening to answer these type of questions only.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions that will close the public hearing? Mr. Hacer, do you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, I would like to. There, there's a lot of concern about how this came about. And, and the processes that we went through as a, as a task force for this. We were asked to be on this by the mayor, all of us are volunteers. And in the very beginning, the mayor, okay, I'm suspicious of Belleville here. But at the very first meeting, the mayor specifically said, and Chief Clay and everybody was in here, that there was no timeline established for us to get this done. There never was. There, there was people actually who testified at our meetings and had asked us to hurry along. And they were not aldermen, they were not the mayor, some of them had been property owners, landlords, I don't know. But at no time since we started meeting did anybody ever ask us to have more meetings or speed things along. We worked at what we thought was good for us. Uh, there was a couple of times where we actually stayed longer than we had planned to stay by, by reasonable amounts because we were making progress and it felt right. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands. No one, no aldermen, not, not the aldermen that were on the committee with us, none of the committee members, no mayor, no, the chief of police, Bob Sabo, nobody ever pushed us to ever hurry this along. We did this at our pace as our schedules allowed. And so, you know, there's, I don't, I don't believe that it's been a rushed process. In fact, if there was any timeline set in place, it was probably a, a timeline established by the task force that the election not only had nothing to do with it, but we didn't really care if it got done before or after the election. Cause we wanted it to be right. And so there was no, no push related to the action, the election at all.
Okay, committee members. We have two dates that we've already assigned to April eleventh and April twenty-fourth. April eleventh is a Thursday. And we're already signed ourselves up for that, so we're free that day. The question I'd like to ask is, could we possibly arrange to have the ordinance meeting on the eleventh, since we have to move it off the ninth? Move it on the night that we know we can all show up? If that's possible, that would be very good. Now, as far as the third, how many members here think they can make the third for housing, which is six, right? Sixteen?
Yeah, six o'clock. I mean, is it really necessary that we be at the-
I don't think it's really necessary. I mean, I think we've taken this through all the, through all the steps we can.
Let them look at it and give us their recommendations and we'll talk about it on the eleventh with ordinance.
I, I think that's a good idea. If they have recommendations at health and housing, we'll consider them in our meeting on the eleventh and.
And the changes that we're talking about tonight will be reincorporated into the final, hopefully with the final draft and be center of.
Now, do we wanna call that a joint meeting of ordinance and task force?
I would like to see that.
Probably. That way both of us could have our own discussions if we need, that's fine. Okay.
So what time, what dates again now?
The eleventh is at, uh.
What time, six-thirty would be?
Six-thirty is what we normally have, yes.
But the third would be at six. So you want this committee there on the third?
I don't think it's necessary to be-
No, if you didn't want to, no, you don't have it. The eleventh is six-thirty.
But the eleventh is six-thirty and that will be a meeting of our committee plus ordinance in here. Yes.
Third, that's, that's the economic detail. The third, the eleventh you're looking at, let's go and look at the calendar here for the-
On the eleventh, you have the library commission.
Yeah, but they meet, they'll meet upstairs soon.
Yeah.
The eleventh is always in the library, it's been our regular standard. Task force meeting, with a solid in this region.
Okay. Good. Do we have any other discussions amongst the committee members? Let's have a motion to close.
So moved.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're closed, thank you, folks. I'd like to thank the audience for their kindness and their civility.